Shasberry Select Board Meeting to order at six forty on Monday, April twentieth, twenty twenty. Uh, I first need to check and see if any member of the Select Board has a conflict with interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening. Tony?
No.
Art?
No.
Ken? Ken Harrington?
No.
Joe Barber?
No.
Tim Skoggins? No. Okay, uh, we have a, uh, a guest on the line, our State Representative David Durfee. Has agreed to call in. Um, we've also been talking with our Senators, uh, Dick Sears and Brian Campion. About an issue, uh, that's come up among the many issues that have come up during the, the current crisis. This one involves in particular, uh, state law that, uh, requires that, uh, towns pay back the money to the school system that they collect for the school system. Uh, right now, a lot of towns are concerned about, uh, the collection of taxes, uh, and what kind of financial position people are going to be in, uh, when taxes are due. Uh, and given that, uh, we'll be in, uh, swimming upstream with our ankles tied to a rock, uh, financially, given just collecting our, our town taxes, we don't want to be on the hook for paying back, uh, education taxes that are likely typically two to three times the, the town budgets, uh. So David, you wanna talk to that issue? I know it's been, uh, been brought up in my field.
Yeah. Yes, uh, I'll, I'll say what I, what I can, and I think the, sort of the bottom line will be there is, this is on everyone's radar. Not much has happened yet. There will be more conversation, and I think that Senators Sears and Campion, uh, held off on, on attending tonight, uh, pending more information, which may be available as soon as, as the next Select Board meeting. Not absolutely sure about that. But anyway, thank you for, for asking me to come in, and I've got about fifteen minutes, and then I've gotta get off to get on another call. I'm sorry, I'm not on video, uh, but I don't know, maybe none of you are on video either. I don't know how, how you're set up exactly. But yeah, the, the, the issue is, Tim outlined it pretty clearly there, is that, as, as I think everybody probably knows, the town collects property, uh, the education property tax on behalf of the school systems, on behalf of the state, state education fund, and it's an efficient way to collect taxes from the taxpayers rather than have two bills go out or have two different offices do it. It's, it, it makes a certain amount of sense to have it come from, uh, the bill come from one entity. Uh, the issue is that, as again, as Tim said, this year, looking ahead to November, when the next tax bills would be, would be due, or, or sooner, for those who pay sooner, uh, we may be in the midst of a recession, and while it's not quite clear how deep that might be, I think everyone's expecting a downturn, an economic downturn, which will mean uh, property owners will have more trouble making their, their, their payments. So, uh, there, there's a couple of things right now that, uh, the state, the, the legislature has, has been, uh, talking about, they've taken some testimony from the League of City and Towns, uh, on changing the, the, the way the law's written right now, which essentially only gives towns the ability to change interest and payment due dates and so forth, uh, if the voters agree to it. And at town meeting, I think the voters agreed to a due date for taxes and, and may have set, um, penalty rate. I'm not sure how that's done in Shasberry, but in any case, the, the statute currently says only the voters can change that. So one, one change that I think they'll be looking at, that we'll be looking at, the legislature that is, would be to give, give the Select Board, uh, or the appropriate legislative body, the ability to make those kinds of changes. Uh, and, and then there's also that, just the question of, uh, who would be responsible if that money that's supposed to be collected isn't collected, and right now it's the, it's the towns. And if the towns need to borrow to cover it, uh, you have that, you have that ability, but there's, there's a case being made that maybe it makes more sense to have, I'm sorry, there's some, some noise on the line here, I'm hearing, uh, coming from somebody else, but, uh, it might make more sense to have either the state coordinate the borrowing, or the state do the borrowing, uh, but those are conversations that are that will be happening, uh, down the road. Uh, let me pause there and see if there are questions.
Dave, given the, the current pandemic that we're, we're experiencing, there is no federal funding that could relieve, uh, people from this situation, or?
Uh, is that Joe?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, Joe, I think that's a, that's a great question, and one of a lot of people are asking. The, uh, so, so, not that there's an ideal solution to any of this, but having money go directly to the taxpayers that they can then, uh, relieve, relieve money that then they can use for this purpose would be one solution, and it might be the, might be the simplest, the least abad of all the, all the possible solutions. Um, there's also the possibility of money, federal money coming to, uh, aid the state or the towns, and I, I, I think at this point, that's still pretty unclear, and there may be more clarity coming up, uh, as we get more guidance, and possibly another, another bill coming out of Congress, uh, with, with more money that may be available, but it's a giant question mark right now, I think, Joe.
Well, what does Betsy DeVos have to say? Anything?
Uh, I couldn't, couldn't tell you that. Don't know.
Okay. I thought she was kind of overseeing all of it, but.
She, uh, well, uh, yeah, as Secretary of Education, she would have some role, but I haven't heard any statements coming from her specifically.
All right, then, uh, maybe she'd have some great, you know, ideas or plans that would hopefully implement, uh, our, our conundrum here.
Yeah. Well, uh, well, that, that may be yet to, yet to come.
Let's hope.
Yep, so I, I don't know if there were, if there were other questions, but I, I just wanted to say again that, uh, well, thank you for bringing it up, Art and Tim and others, and, uh, to let you know that this is definitely on the radar of the legislature now. It hadn't been, uh, perhaps a week ago. Uh, but it's something that I, I imagine most legislators have heard from their Select Boards by now with the same message that, uh, you know, that you asked me about.
Okay, well, thank you, David. Appreciate you giving us an update.
Yeah, and if there's anything else that develops, I'll, I'll certainly let you know. You may hear it before I do, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
Good night. Uh, I'm gonna back up a little bit here and do something I might have, uh, wanted to do at the top of the meeting, and check in with, uh, Cat TV and see if we are going out live on Facebook and cable TV.
Yes, you are. You're all set.
Okay, um, Cat TV production, and I see Cat TV staff are both line, online. Uh, I would ask you two if, uh, you don't mind to mute. We were getting some noise from you a little bit earlier.
Uh, if we mute, we may not get the audio going through the broadcast.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, uh, we'll move on down the agenda. The next up is, uh, minutes. We have minutes from our last meeting on April sixth that was circulated as your motion to approve the minutes that were circulated.
One more.
Moved by Tony?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion on the minutes for April sixth? Question is, shall we approve the minutes for April sixth? Tony?
Aye.
Art?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Joe?
Aye.
Ken, yes. So the minutes for April sixth are approved by vote of five zero zero. Next up, we have warrants. Please bear with me as I bring that up. Okay. First, I have payroll warrant. Number twenty in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and eight cents.
So moved.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion on the payroll? All in favor of approving payroll warrant number twenty? I will go through the roll. Tony?
Aye.
Art?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Joe?
Aye.
Ken, yes. So payroll warrant number twenty in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and eight cents is approved. Uh, next, I don't think I need to share this one. It's, uh, Beamer's warrant. Check warrant number three. The amount is ten thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars twenty-six cents. Is there motion to approve the Beamer's warrant?
So moved.
Moved by Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion on the retirement warrant? Question is the retirement warrant. Tony?
Aye.
Art?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken, yes. So check warrant number three to Beamer's ten thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars twenty-six cents is approved by zero zero. Okay, next I have check warrant number twenty-eight. The total amount is fifty-three thousand nine hundred four dollars and fifty-four cents.
So moved.
Moved by Tony?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Seconded by Art. Major items on this one include one thousand dollars to Aflac, seven thousand dollars to Blue Cross Blue Shield, seventeen hundred dollars to Bennington County Sheriff, uh, one thousand fifty to Cat TV.
I see quarterly payment for the annual service.
Okay. Uh, thirty-eight hundred to Delory Sales and Service, sixty-four hundred to DeFrain, that would be the water stuff we were just talking about. Uh, sixty-nine hundred to Dupont Storage Systems.
That was for improvements to the vault, storage shelves in the vault, movable shelves.
I see, uh, eight hundred dollars to GAB Fuels. Thirteen twenty-five to Innovative Surface Solutions. To our Chlorid, Chlorid People. Two thousand to LRS Associates.
LHS, they do the ballots and elections.
Joe, is that you playing the guitar?
Oh, no. It's a Yuta Waley.
Ah, okay. Well, we're hearing it. If you're gonna do that, please mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I was trying to be very soft, but I didn't know you could hear. Sorry about that.
Um, I'm sorry. Dave, tell me again what LHS is?
Uh, it's they print the ballots for the election.
Alex, okay. Uh, thirty-eight hundred to Nemrick.
That's for our assessor. This is ours.
Okay. Seventy-three hundred to TAM. Thirty-two hundred to Wallingford Crush Stone, nine hundred to Weaver Excavating. Those are the major items. Any more discussion on check warrant number twenty-eight? The question is, do we approve check warrant number twenty-eight? Tony?
Aye.
Art?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken, yes. So check warrant number twenty-eight. Total amount is fifty-three thousand nine hundred and four dollars and fifty-four cents is approved by zero zero. Okay, uh, announcements. Uh, I had a note on here to remind myself that DPW operations had been further curtailed when we wrote the, uh, agenda. That is the case, but since then, they have, uh, softened restrictions a little bit more, so essentially ignore that. Uh, we are operating as allowed at the current, uh, time, which allows in particular grading in order to keep the roads, uh, safe and passable, which is actually relaxing of the standards we had been operating on a few days before that, so. Uh, I guess, uh, later in the meeting, we will be talking with the town clerk about relaxing some of the restrictions on Cole Hall and allowing people back in on a limited basis, so, uh, stick around for those announcements. Any other announcements that anyone would like to suggest?
Uh, I got a call from, uh, Mr. Paquelin, Tom Paquelin, who used to be the treasurer for the Boy Scouts, uh, uh, club that was in Shasberry, which is now disbanded, and they, they have a considerable amount of money and all the supplies and all that sort of stuff. Uh, I think they're stored in the Methodist church. Uh, if anybody would be interested in starting up a, uh, another Boy Scouts club, uh, you're, you've got it every, you've got everything all ready, ready to go, money and supplies and all that sort of stuff. I don't know the dynamics of why the club is no longer, uh, i- in town, but, uh, I know that there was one.
Okay, um, who should people contact if they wanna do that?
Uh, Tom Paquelin, or, or, or myself, and I'll get ahold of Tom. Tom was the treasurer who has, who has the, uh, checkbook and all that sort of stuff.
Okay, Art Whitman's contact information is on the town website, so Art, if, uh, people want to pursue that, they will contact you, and you will put them in touch with, uh, Tom.
Yes, that, that'll be great.
Any other announcements? All right, uh, are there any members of the public who have called in wishing to make a comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to, uh, Treasurer's Report with our Treasurer Melanie, Melanie Dexter. Are you still there?
Hi, yeah, I'm still here. Uh, did, uh, you get my report that I, I gave to Dave earlier today?
I did. Do you want cash flow?
Yeah, let's look at cash flow first. Um, uh, the main number that jumps out at you is the second one down, the state highway money. Um, we were, at the last meeting, we were talking about how we had, uh, we were waiting for that, and that was gonna put us in a much better cash position for the end of the year, and, um, I was a little worried because as far as I knew, we had not received it in January, and, and then we had it coming up in April again. Um, so you see the eighty-two thousand, that's in fact two quarters of highway money. That was my error, uh, well, sort of a, a combination, um, error between Dave and me, that when the first, when the, the money came in in January, we put it in, I put it in a reserve account, uh, because I thought it was something else. But so anyways, back where it belongs, back in the general fund, and, uh, you see it, our, our bottom line down there, it's cash balance. That puts us with, uh, two hundred twenty-one thousand, um, as of right now, which is, um, I'm a lot more comfortable about the end of the year than I was before that highway money came in. So I, I think that we're, we're pinching pennies. It's gonna be close. Uh, it's not gonna be as close as we thought it was gonna be. Um, Dave is watching those numbers like a hawk, and, and, um, like, it's, in particular, the, the final payroll of the year is, is gonna happen after I think we will have access to our line of credit, so, um, for the bulk of that pay in the last pay period is actually is gonna hit in, uh, fiscal twenty-one. So I, I'm feeling pretty good about this. Dave, do you wanna chime in at all?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think we're in a good position to finish the year out like we do every year, uh, very, very close to the budget number. Uh, a little bit over, a little bit under, uh, which always makes Melanie and I nervous as we get to this time of year because we always cut it close, but, uh, after that highway issue was, uh, corrected, uh, yeah, I think we're, we're in a good position to get through. We're still gonna have to keep some cuts in because we did have over, as I said before, in equipment repairs, and we did an awful lot of highway construction last year, so, uh, so make it, but it, it's gonna be down to the wire. It's gonna be close.
Um, and then if, if you wanted to look at the reserve accounts, there's not much going on at all. Um, the, the thing that jumps out there is, is the, um, the other side of that, that highway money that I was just talking about. We, we parked, I parked it in, um, the Class Three Road, two eighty-five. I, the, the bottom line is, I thought that was a grant, uh, a specific grant as opposed to a, the general highway grant. So you see that coming out of the two eighty-five down there. Um, everything else there, all those debits you see are just money that was due to the general fund, and I'm, I'm keeping very on top of that, so, um, whenever, whenever we write a check from one of the reserve accounts, I'm, I'm putting the money right back in the general fund, um, just to make sure that our c- cash position is okay for the end of the year. Uh, anybody have any questions about either of those? Okay, the, the other thing I did wanna talk about is, is that, uh, people probably should know this by now, but I wanted to make sure that, that, uh, it's understood that the state pushed back the, the date for the, um, homestead declarations al- along with, uh, with the, the tax filing date to July fifteenth, so people can now file their homestead declarations up until July fifteenth without any kind of penalty at all. Um, as, as, sort of following on, on the conversation that Representative Durfee was, uh, was having earlier, I think that we're going to wanna talk about whether we're gonna, as a town, waive the penalty this year. We've gone back and forth on that the last few years. I think as long as I've been treasurer, we have not waived the penalty, but if we're ever going to do it, this would be the year to do it, and, um, I think that, uh, it's something that the Select Board has to determine, and I think, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be in the first meeting after, in, in the new fiscal year.
Yes, I think that's when we would have to do it.
Yeah, so I just wanted that to be on your radar. Um, it's gonna be a conversation we'll have to have, and, um, it, it's, it's totally up to you guys. I don't have any say in it, but, uh, as I say, I think if we're ever gonna waive it, this would be the year to waive it. Because there's been so much confusion about when, you know, when taxes are due, uh, what's happening federally, what's happening at state level. Um, I, I think that we might wanna, um, be lenient this year.
I'm sorry, I might have missed something there. Which penalty are you referring to?
There's a penalty for late filing your homestead declaration. There's a, um, I, I can't remember exact, the, is it three percent? I think it's three percent of the, of the tax. It, it can, it can be a fairly hefty penalty. We, uh, it, it involves, when you file late, it involves a lot of extra work, uh, on my part, um, just because of sending out, uh, revised tax bills. If, if you file your home, the bottom line is, if you file your homestead declaration after you've already received a tax bill, it really complicates things with, uh, with mortgage companies and with, with me, and, uh, various other steps have to happen, so that's why we want to discourage it when things are normal, um, and, and have people file on time. I, this is a year that would, that would be the exception, I would say. Is that clear? It's just, it's the penalty for the late filed homestead declaration.
Okay.
So just have that on your radar for July.
We will take that under advisement.
Yeah.
I was gonna say you extend that till July fifteenth, right?
Yeah, July fifteenth for, for, uh, I believe every day, all that stuff is due the same day.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but having said that, I, I do wanna say that, um, it's a good idea to get them in, uh, on time anyway. It's just for your own, for your own, for all tax filers, it's, it's better for them. It's also a bit better for the town if we're able to to start having money flowing in, um, obviously, but the due date is July fifteenth now. So that's all I've got.
Okay. All right, thank you, Melanie.
Okay, I'm gonna get off the line then. Bye, everybody.
Okay, next up, we have our, our Emergency Managers Report from Paul Dancero. Are you still there? There you are.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, just a quick update of the Select Board and, uh, anyone listening in. Uh, I'll start with overall, the State Department of Health and the Vermont Emergency Management are pretty optimistic at this point on the COVID-nineteen spread rate in Vermont. Um, specifically, it's been, it has been signi- significantly less, uh, of a spread rate than what was originally projected, so the social distancing, uh, stay up, you know, stay at home efforts, and everyone's efforts to mitigate the spread is having an effect on the rate of spread, uh, through the state. Uh, just as a, for compare, you know, an idea to give you kind of numbers, as of this morning, uh, for the daily update, there was eight hundred and sixteen total cases within the state, and within the, uh, county, there was thirty-eight. Or, excuse me, yeah, within, uh, excuse me, town, uh, or, excuse me, county events, and there was thirty-eight total cases, so. Uh, the other thing that's, uh, is the number of testing that's been done across the state is is usually about anywhere from three hundred fifty to four hundred a day, depending how many were referred. Um, and for the total for the state, it's almost thirteen thousand, uh, as of today's. But just, the testing still refers, or still requires a doctor's referral to go to a test site and have the testing done. With, with those factors in mind, that was what kinda led to Governor Scott's issuing of Addendum Number Ten on Friday. Uh, that addendum provides guidance on workplace safety and COVID-nineteen prevention required uh, to be observed by landscaping or outside workers, uh, small-scale construction crews, small retail stores, uh, that they may now also conduct curbside pickup, um, and online orders, but not have anyone in the stores themselves, and single-person personal service such as real estate, lawyers, offices, et cetera, that are, we're all able to resume work as of today. And I know Tim and Dave, I think later, you know, t- And I know Tim and Dave, I think later, you know, town's going to discuss some other areas of operation that might be changing. I wasn't going to address that now, I was going to wait till we have that discussion. As far as emergency services, though, with, you know, with, for the town of Shaftesbury, the State Police, Benton Rescue Squad, Arlington Rescue Squad, Shaftesbury Fire Department, we're all still fully operational and available for any emergencies. Each of us are using, all the emergency services are using protocols to help protect their members from any COVID-nineteen spread. One other area I want to just highlight is the local emergency management plan, the L E M P, that was formerly known as the Local Emergency Operation Plan. The initial draft was completed this weekend, and David received a provide-back comments on that. Oh, we'll input those changes, and we'll have our final draft ready this week. The deadline for the local emergency management plan to be submitted to the state is May first. That deadline has not been extended. However, the plan and the adoption form that goes with it may be submitted electronically and does not require physical signatures due to the COVID-nineteen mitigation. But subject to questions from any select board or in public, it's allowed for comments.
Questions for Paul?
What does? Go ahead, Ken.
Counted very good. I got no question.
Do we, selectmen, see this plan, or do we have to vote on it before it's sent up to the state?
You do have to, you do have to sign off on it. We just did a little rewrite of it today. I sent back a few changes for Paul. And as soon as we get that done, we'll send it off to all of you. And then it does have to be approved by the board before it gets submitted at a warrant public hearing.
Well, we are going to have one before the first of May, is that right?
Well, we can submit this form to be in compliance, and then you guys can vote on it.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to find out, if, if we could vote on it afterwards.
And it can be signed electronically, which is another item we're bringing up later on here, where it would, under this circumstance, we can just require one signature to represent the board.
Okay. All right.
And Dave and rest of the board, I'll get those changes incorporated back to you, Dave, no later than Wednesday, so we can have it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just point of clarifications, in case we need to bring it up later. Our, our plan was to authorize Tim Skoggins and Art Whitman to sign for the board on specific items, payroll, operating expenses, and V M R's payments. So unless we extend that to more items, we would all need to sign something like the, the L E O.
Then the procedure then would have to be, because I have several things, everything from the fire warden on, that have all come in the last couple of days, that if you vote on it later on in this meeting, then I will just keep emailing it around to each of you to sign, to email back to me, until I have all five signatures. We have, just tonight, I have a certificate of project completion that has to go to the Vermont Bond Bank and the forest fire warden appointment form from the state. They all require five signatures, and the only way to do that right now is to send it around. As one person signs, we keep forwarding it along.
Yeah, that could be kind of clumsy. I'm not sure everybody's got a printer and a scanner. I wonder if we want to consider, given that we are relaxing the, the social distancing just a bit, if we would be comfortable with putting documents to be signed out on the table at Cole Hall and for a selectman to go in individually, one at a time, sign them, and leave.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that. They can be on the board table, you can just come in and sign. And as standard protocol, actually, we only need three signatures, because that constitutes the majority. So we need three people to sign each of these.
Is that, is that agreeable to the, to the board, given that we are planning later in the meeting to allow the chair or the vice chair to sign on routine items like payroll, operating expenses, and retirement payments?
Just those, just those mentioned, but we still got to go into Cole Hall and sign what Dave has just talked about, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
We'll add to that eventually, the L E M P also, that Paul was just giving out.
But I like the idea that only three of us have got to go.
It means the majority of the board.
Yeah.
I routinely go by Cole Hall, or I get until, until lockdown. I am more than willing to be willing, more than willing to be one of the three.
I could very easily do that, too.
Do you need a motion, Tim?
No, we're just coordinating a bit here. Tony, is that, or Joe, is that convenient for you to do? I'm trying to keep Ken Harrington in his house.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's that?
I've been out on the road, I'm not that fragile.
All righty.
Okay. Take more than COVID-nineteen, take you down, huh, Ken?
No.
I'm killing it anyway.
Yeah.
Ken, we thank you for offering up your life for the paperwork.
Yeah, right.
Okay, also, under the topic of emergency management and COVID-nineteen and operations at Cole Hall, we have been given guidance that we can start to allow people into the clerk's office to do research. Marlene, are you still with us?
I am here.
Okay, thank you for your patience.
No problem.
What are you hearing around the state about the relax thing that's going on?
From what I hear on the listserv, most clerks, unless they're in a really tiny office, are going to be taking appointments. And that was my, that's my plan, is to take appointments two days a week, allow no more than one person in at a time, require that they wear a mask, I will wear a mask while they're in. They'll have to wash their hands, and I know Dave has hand sanitizer on order. When that comes in, they'll also have to sanitize. And then I will clean in between each appointment, just to keep things as, as clean as possible. And, and the reason I think it's important to let researchers in is because right now, we're on the upswing for the real estate business. And what happens this time of year is, for the realtors, I can get the deeds for them. They don't, that's not a big deal. But for attorneys, if they're doing a title search, I don't do the title search for them. What I've been doing the last few weeks is sending them an index of the person they're looking for. Then they tell me what they want, and I'll copy and email out the deeds. It's very tricky, because people can be sued if something is missed. Title researchers always carry insurance for that. I don't have insurance for it. So I, and, and if it goes back too far, if it goes back into the index books, I won't do that anyway. I'll only do what's on the computer for these guys. So they feel better if they can do it themselves. I certainly feel better if the attorney or the researcher can come in and physically go through the, themselves, go through the index. They know what they're looking for. I don't always know exactly what they're looking for. So to me, it just makes more sense to let them do it. And this wouldn't be, it would be two days a week. I wouldn't let anybody overlap. I would not let anybody in without an appointment. I'll be very strict about that. People still can't come in and pay their dog licenses. They'll still have to do that by mail or over the website. It's just for research, just to keep the real estate business going in this town.
I'm inclined to agree with Marlene. She is in there. It is a very tiny, relatively small office. There's not a lot of room to move around. But if it's just Marlene and one researcher, given the social distancing and disinfecting protocols that she's suggesting, I think we can allow it.
Consensus or motion, Tim?
I don't think we need a motion. I just want to make sure that, because we didn't have a motion to implement the lockdown. I think we can lift it by consensus.
I agree.
So just, we're, we're still not open to the public. It's appointment only and for research only. The other, the other thing that I asked for, Dave has ordered for me, is a sneeze guard to put at the counter. It's, it's a lot easier for me to social distance from a researcher who's in my office versus somebody right at the counter. So we're, we're hoping that it'll be here before we reopen to the public.
We ordered it and then found out it was shipping from Greece.
Yes. Whoops.
On the way. It was a nice, nice advertisement, looked good, nice maid in Iowa or someplace. But then I got the shipping notice that left Greece last Thursday, I think it was, so.
Okay.
But I'd like to go along with, we want to be clear that Cole Hall is closed. No work will go on in Cole Hall, except for people who make an appointment with Marlene to do work with her. The building is still going to be closed all the time.
And if they want a tax bill, or if they want a lister card, they're still going to have to send an email or leave a message for the listers or the treasurer and do that remotely. I, I can let them go in and get the deeds, and that's it.
Okay, I think that sounds fine. Marlene, do you want to announce when and how people can make an appointment? And have you decided on what days you're going to be open?
I'm actually going to send out an email to our, I have an email list with attorneys and realtors and appraisers. So I'm going to let them know what's going on via email. I don't think it really needs to be out in the public, because we're not open to the public.
Okay. You don't think that there could be attorneys or researchers that are not on your list that might?
Might be watching? Okay, well, if, if that's the case, then Mondays and, Mondays and Wednesdays, I will be taking appointments. But they have to call me or email me and let me know what day they want to come in, and I will give them a time, because I can't let anybody overlap. If they would let me know if it's going to be a long search or a quick search, that would be also helpful.
Very good. Dave, anything else we need to deal with relative to COVID crisis?
No, I think that's the only thing that's going to change any of our rules. The things we were concerned about were changed by the governor last Friday, which was the kind of severe restrictions put on the highway crew. Those have been alleviated. And I'll just reiterate that Cole Hall is closed. Marlene's completely right. If you need a lister's card or deal anything with the listers, the treasurer, zoning, everyone's working remotely. Everyone has a VPN network to access our records. So all you need to do is email them or call them, and we can get you whatever information you need. There's no reason to come to the building and you, you won't be admitted, other than the attorneys and researchers Marlene's given appointments to.
All right, very good. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, we have a proposal from Green Lantern, Green Lantern Solar. Ralph Mema, if I have it right, are you still with us?
Yep, I am, hi. Should I turn my camera on as well?
It's up to you.
Right, that should work here. There I am, hi.
There you are.
Yeah, thank you very much for including this request in your, your agenda for this evening. I don't want to say anything that you're already very, you know, familiar with, so, so stop me. But our request is basically to see if the select board is willing to sign a letter of support for a, a proposed solar site on Murphy Hill Road as a, as a preferred site. And I want to just back up from that for a moment and say that I'm with Green Lantern. I'm, I'm sitting in Brattleboro right now, because that's where I live. We're based up in Waterbury, and up to this point, we haven't done a solar project in Shaftesbury. But you may be familiar with some places in, for example, Poundle and Bennington, where we've, we've been active for the past few years. We all, we're kind of prepared for this coronavirus pandemic unexpectedly, because we don't actually have a physical office anywhere. We work from our homes and our cars and from sites. And we've been around for about ten years, going on eleven. We have, at this point, only developed solar projects in Vermont. And most of them are in the hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred kilowatt range. In other words, from about an acre up to four to five acres. Almost all of them are net metered projects. And I think at this point, we're upwards of eighty-five projects in over sixty towns. So, you know, we've, we've been sort of doing the same thing all over the state, from literally corner to corner, Poundle to Vernon to Derby to St. Albans. And what we're proposing for Murphy Hill Road, you know, fits very, very well, or very much within that type of project that we've, we've kind of specialized in. We're, we're going to propose to build a one-hundred-and-fifty-kilowatt solar array, which takes up a little bit less than an acre. It will be a net metered project. And I can, I don't want to ramble on too much about the whole, you know, preferred site thing and how solar permitting works, because you may all be very familiar with that. So I'm going to stop and basically see how much, whether you want the long version or the short version of why we are requesting a letter from you.
Uh, this, Tim, let me just say that as a rule, Shaftesbury is very generous with the preferred site designation. The select board is on record, and it is in our town plan that we do not seek to regulate solar anymore than we do other types of building or industry. So we are aware of this project. We have had a discussion about it. There was an issue about the driveway, and I understand that's been re-engineered. You might say a word or two about that, and I suspect that the board will be inclined to grant preferred site designation to this project.
Okay, so I can definitely go into a few more specifics. I'm wondering if there's any way that we could pull up on the screen the design sketch that I sent on, I think it was Thursday or Friday of last week, so we have that to refer to.
Yes, give me one second.
Okay. Well, while you're pulling it up, I'll just say that I was contacted by the Chapello brothers about three years ago, when they were considering doing more with the land there, considering spending more time living there, and we're investigating different ways to generate income from that farm property, which had been in the family for several generations. And it took a while for us to finally, for them to go through a number of different, of different family land transactions, and for us to explore, you know, how net metering works and how we work and so forth. So it was really, it's really only been in the last year that we've been actively pursuing this project. And so, right, so that's, that's one image that I sent last week, if you can all see it on your screens. So just, just for, for quick orientation, this is Murphy Hill Road, and this is where Sally Gannon Road runs off of it. And just another couple of hundred yards down the road, you can hit the New York border there. The design has gone through a number of different iterations, and it had reached this picture that we're looking at back in October, November, based on mapping that we had done of the wetlands there in particular. The pink shaded area, in fact, can you see my cursor moving around? No, you can't see that. The pink shaded area is actual Class II or Class I wetland. And then the red dashed lines around it are the 50-foot buffer that is required for any kind of construction to stay outside of. And so, you know, we had a lot of work done by our environmental consultant to make sure that we weren't going to run afoul of the wetlands and the buffer rules there. We actually had Rebecca Chalmers from the Wetlands Office, A&amp;R, came out with us and took a look at this site and gave her approval of the way we had designed it. However, what we discovered, just to cut to the chase here, this, this design was viable, a very, very short interconnection to the single-phase power line along the road, and a very, very short access road for construction, all sort of from right around, right there on the corner. However, before we were even made aware that this might be problematic as an entrance, because it's right on the corner, we heard from Peter and Chris Chapello that some reservations had been raised by their relative Mario Matzola, who lives up the hill to the east of Murphy Hill Road and overlooks this, this field. So, our visual impact consultant, Jeremy Owens, and I went to see Mario in the beginning of March, first week of March. And once we got up there on the hill and looked down on the site, we realized that this particular design was just going to be extremely visible from this house. That there were some references to other folks in the neighborhood who were also concerned about putting the array right here. So, we decided that it really was best to take a step back from this design and come up with something that, you know, might be a bit more expensive for us to build, but would help to the neighbors. So, I'm wondering, Tim, if there's any other way to pull up the other design sketch that replaces this?
Yes.
Is that feasible? So anyway, we went back to our drawing boards, literally, and over the past month or so, came up with an alternative design. And that, as it comes up, I'll mention that I was out there last week with our construction manager. We maintained social distancing and had masks on to basically walk around the field and think through this, this design change. And then he was back there today, thank you, that's it, that's perfect. He was back there today, this morning, with Green Mountain Power, with the district transmission and distribution designer, to basically vet what you're looking at right now. So, what we've done here is we've pulled the array back toward the west and a bit toward the south. And the advantage of that is that this should not be visible from Mario's house at all, because it will be protected by the trees along the brook here that comes down under and runs southwest from Murphy Hill Road. We paid attention to sightlines, and there's a sightline that this is just south of. So, it shouldn't be of any particular visual disturbance for him. And because it's further away from the road and downgrade, it's also a lot less visible from the road for, you know, any traffic passing by. The only other features I'll just mention about this design is that we have a straight, it indicates a road, an access road. Well, it's really just a farm road. It's a, you know, landscaping cloth with a top dressing of about six inches of crushed stone that is flush with the surrounding field, so a tractor could just drive right across this road. It won't be particularly, you know, disruptive. And then the other thing that I want to point out, and then maybe I'll stop for some questions, is that this long red box is actually, it actually indicates that we have tried out the idea of going underground from the road all the way down to the array with the electrical interconnection, and not putting poles and wires in at all. And it turned out from the meeting that Alan had with Green Mountain Power this morning that Green Mountain Power likes the idea, they approved an underground connection. And a big advantage of that is that, you know, number one, there are fewer poles and wires, so it's also less visually disruptive. But it also allows us to completely avoid having to zigzag through the wetland and the wetland buffers along the road here. So that's, this is where we've come, and this is about the, I don't know, probably seventh or eighth design iteration since the very, very first one that we put together, I guess around a year ago. And I'll stop there, I, let me just say one more thing, there are a number of other hoops we have to jump through in order to obtain a permit. And at this stage, the preferred site designation is something that we frequently have to obtain from towns, and because a site like this is not already one of the categories that's sort of automatically designed, automatically designated in the statute as a preferred site, like landfills, gravel pits, brownfield sites, and so forth. Because it's just an ordinary field, it needs local support for preferred site designation. Having said that, what we will do quite soon, you know, assuming that things go well in our request to you, is to issue the 45-day notice of intent to file for a permit. And so that 45-day notice will include this design, a letter, some other information. It'll automatically go to you, to the Planning Commission, to the BRC, to a bunch of state agencies, and to all the abutters, including abutters in New York State. So there's, you know, this permit process is going to continue, and there are going to be multiple opportunities for public comment and things that are necessary to the design. And then, at least 45 days after we issue the 45-day notice, we will submit our application to the Public Utility Commission for a certificate of public good. So, you'll see us again in this letter. And, you know, like I said, there'll be ample opportunities to make corrections along the way. I should probably stop because you might have questions.
No questions for Ralph?
Yeah, Ken Harrington. Is that, could that land be, I can't see it because I have my phone. Could that be considered prime agricultural land?
Ken, I'm, I'm familiar with the field. It's a field that probably could be plowed and planted with corn or that sort of stuff, but over the many years that I've seen it, all this, it's just been a hayfield, and I don't know if it would be considered prime, I don't. It certainly is used about one cutting a year, and other than that, it's not part of a huge farm project or anything else like that.
I think I know where, I think I know where you're talking about there. And I'm pretty sure I've seen that field. My only concern is, I, I think in my own mind, I'm not a 100% favorite of solar, because I think it's that, you're only going to use it when the sun is shining. But if anybody wants to go do it, fine, I'm all for anything that anybody wants to get power because we need it. But I am a little concerned, I've seen a lot of places, ones that have the mine is up there by group four and seven in Rutland, and some other places where there's huge solar fields that are land that I haven't seen being used for agriculture a lot of years. And if you want to put a solar field, like that one that's up on Buck Hill Road, maybe that's an ideal place, you know, go for it. But I'm just a little concerned that they're starting to use too much of that land for something that could be other things, that's all.
Another, another thing is, Ken, the way this is laid out, somebody, somebody still could hay around it, it only takes up less than an acre, less than a full acre out of a multiple acre field, so it still could be used.
Right, well, like I said, I hate to see agricultural land go where it could be used, that's all. When, you know, a solar field, you go in the center of a mill, and it really could be used right of the yoke. But that's, that's all. Anything that we can get to get power, we need it. I'll get you, I'll give you that. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, Ralph?
Yeah, Ralph? I just wanted to ask you a question. I'm not that, you know, I'm a little familiar with solar, not all that much, but when you mentioned net metering, what is that?
So net metering is, yeah, net metering is a kind of, it's like a billing arrangement and incentive program that, that is something that the state of Vermont created through legislation. And I, I think there are probably about 35 states in the country that have different, you know, variations of net metering. What it boils down to is that if you think about, you know, like an independent power producer that goes out and builds any kind of power plant, the simplest way of getting paid for producing that power is to just sell it to the power company. And, you know, basically sell kilowatt hours to the likes of Green Mountain Power.
Oh, so you're, I'm sorry, you're still on the grid though, right? You're not off the grid?
No, this is definitely on the grid. But the difference is that what I just described to you is what, is just a simple power purchase agreement between an independent, you know, third-party power producer and a, and a public utility. The way net metering, well, the thing though, is if you're going to do that, if you're going to be a power producer, you have to get FERC approval and go through, you know, federal permitting, and you're, you have to operate as a, as a utility, basically. A much simpler way from a legal standpoint of doing this is, is what's called net metering, where you have an array like this, or any kind of power plant hooked up to the grid, and it, you know, delivers power into the, but rather than that the utility then uses and redistributes, us getting paid directly by Green Mountain Power for the power, what they do is they credit the value of the power at a rate that's set in legislation, it's not a market rate, it's set in legislation, but they credit the value of that power to what are called off-takers or net metering customers. And, and it reduces their electric bills. And then what they do is they, they pay at a discount, they pay, they pay for those credits, and they, they pay us as the developer of the array. And so just to give you a couple of quick examples, in Poundle, we built a 500-kilowatt array near the tannery in North Poundle, which has Mount Snow, if you, if you can believe it, as the off-taker. We built, we built a small array next to the sheriff's department in Bennington, which you can see from the road, it's kind of on a hillside. And the off-taker is the, the off-taker there is the town of, oh gosh, what was it? Not Richmond, some town anyway, up in, in Orange County. And then, the other, the other one we finished recently on the Powell landfill, there's a capped landfill in Poundle by the transfer station. And, believe it or not, that's, that, that, not the power, but the net metering credits go to some schools in Essex. And so, sometimes the, the power plant and the recipient of the net metering credits can be hundreds of miles, well, at least, you know, 50, 100 miles away, as long as they're all within the same power utility territory, in case it's Green Mountain Power. And I probably confused you more than, than helped you, but net metering works in this way.
So basically, what you're saying is, if I was the customer and I didn't want a solar array in my area, I could have it somewhere else in another town or state and then have that power brought to me, right?
That's right. And for these types of arrays, the customers tend to be schools, hospitals, ski resorts, town operations and so forth, as opposed to smaller retail customers. Although, there, there is another related concept called community solar, which is also based on net metering. And I know that Bima Nida has done some arrays in your neck, your neck of the woods that are of that type, where, you know, residential customers.
Is that like a consolidated effort?
Right, like a, like a shared array with 20 or 30 or 40 households that all take pieces of it. But that's based on net metering as well, it's, it's the same basic legislation. It's just that what we're doing here would not be household-based, it would be more based on a, like an elementary school or something like that as an, as an off-taker.
It could be anybody, right? Okay. Thank you.
I guess, I make the motion that the Select Board sign the, sign the letter or sign the document that says that we are in favor of this?
Okay, we have a motion from Art to designate the, designate Green Lantern's Murphy Hill Solar Project as a preferred site. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ken? Any more discussion on that? Okay, the question is, do we grant preferred site designation to Green Lantern's Murphy Hill Solar Project? Tony?
Hi.
Art?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tim? Yes. Okay, that motion is agreed to by a vote of 5-0-0.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ralph.
Just contact me if you have any questions.
Okay.
All right. Thanks very much, how does this, would I sign out?
Yeah, if you hover over your screen, you'll be offered a leave button, I believe.
Okay. Thank you all very much, have a good evening.
Okay, well, my count, we're up to roads report, David?
Okay, the road crew is back to operating for spring maintenance, the graders are back out. We are doing some ditching operations on the new guidelines that came out on Friday. Most of the work is up by the hollow the next day or so, and then down to Sally Gannon. The graders are on the east side, doing work over there also. Mostly, most of the west side of town, it's west of 7A, is complete, so they'll be finishing up the east side. There was a little bit of delay with everything going on and different directives coming about what they were allowed to do or not allowed to do. We are going to move into split operations, we have an issue with bad rainy days, that how do you keep people separated when they're in the building together? They will do some projects outside to keep people separated. The grader operators will service their equipment on days they can't be upgrading. So, we will, and as they had been doing before, all these directives came, making it more difficult. They have been distancing themselves, they have masks, and no one, no one in the road crew is working anywhere near each other. Graders are totally solitary occupation. When they're ditching, there's a good 30 feet between the two operators at least. So, we have no problems following the CDC and the Department of Health guidelines, and they're back up running completely. And, you know, other than maybe some projects we'll look into later down the road, most everything now is just grading and cleaning out some of the ditches for the winter, and we'll go into the maintenance mode. And we can do that for a long time, because we have a lot of ditches that need to be done, and we've got the grading done. Other than that, it's pretty, pretty quiet.
Okay. So I understand that we're still prohibited from engaging in major construction projects prohibited from engaging in major construction projects, is that correct?
Yeah, they only wanted this time two people to be working together, uh, in a non-emergency situation. Uh, we really have so many things to do, it doesn't even become an issue for us. If we had to start getting down and, and putting, you know, culvert across the road, people would have to start getting, getting closer to each other. But none of that's in the forecast. So at least July first, um, but some monetary restrictions too that we have. Uh, the closest they'll get is we get some wind damaged trees that come down the middle of the road and they have to be moved. Uh, that'd probably be the closest they would get to each other. But then that begins to fall under the emergency category. It's kind of like if we have a water main break and the guys have to go fix the water main, they're going to have to be relatively close to each other. Uh, but that's all outside routine operations. So they're, they're good to go right now.
Okay, any other comments or questions about roads?
Yeah, I just, I just have one comment. Uh, one of the trucks, uh, spent a lot of time at Delory's, uh, this past year, way over budget. And so I asked Dave if it was a truck that we'd had a lot of problems with. And looking into it, he said this was the first year we'd only, we'd spent a huge amount of money on it. Uh, I'm going to go down and, uh, or call, uh, Delory's and just ask them what the work was done on it and if they foresee any other problems, or if we should stick it out until the end of the, um, scheduled, uh, depreciation on it when we normally, um, trade it in. But if they think that the thing is a hot, is a pile of junk, then we may have to change our schedule. But I'd like to talk to Dave Delory about that before we make a decision.
Yeah, because the truck, uh, that Art's talking about is, is the tandem, the, the older tandem, which isn't that old, uh, two thousand thirteen or twelve. Um, this year, and it was over thirty thousand, and all the prior years, it had been just about whatever a truck is from three to five. Earlier in, in the warrant, the newer tandem, the two thousand fifteen, its repairs was all that thirty-eight hundred dollars at Delory's. So, uh, it's part of the problem we have of, we have to be, continue to beef up the maintenance end for the trucks on, on our budget because every time these things break, i- it's a lot of money. Even if you remember, there was a bill from, uh, uh, Weaver. Uh, that was just to drive our, our Volvo up to the repair shop outside of, uh, Burlington. Because it had to be flatbedded up there because it was cheaper, the flatbed, the Volvo, so up by Burlington, I forget which county it's in there. And for them to come down, they charged so much to come down to do it. So the expenses of these things are quite large. This, this vehicle, we would be replacing it two years from now. Um, so we have to be realistic and look at the idea that we probably have to find a way to keep this thing moving, uh, given the current economics there. We're talking about a quarter million dollar truck here, two twenty. Um, that's not going to be easy to come up with if we're facing lots of shortfalls. And the only way to do it sooner is to, uh, to borrow money to do it, which we've just gotten out of all our loans. The only loan we have left is for the garage. Uh, but it was programmed to be replaced in just two years. Uh, because it isn't, you know, tremendously old. That would be replacing it in its ninth year. So I think we have to play this one by year. I, I was considering that maybe we could just move it along. But everything changed from the beginning of March and, uh, it's just not going to be, we have to be more concerned about our revenue stream than what we're sending out the, the other end.
Can you remind me, are we talking about the same truck that had the engine that was involved in the class action suit?
Yes. So we are getting money back on that already. But, you know, it's, it's, well, I can't say that because we haven't gotten the final documents on that. But that would just be a ten thousand, we qualified for the ten thousand dollar credit, which is a third of what we spent on it this year. But what Art was getting, what I was talking to Art about is if you take the trucks out and you show how much was spent on each vehicle over years, this wasn't, this one isn't such a great outlier to, you know, think it's going to, the wheels are going to fall off it. It had a bad year. It had a mighty bad year. But with all the work that was just done to it, I think it's prudent, given the conditions, to see how long we can, uh, keep it going until it was going to be traded in. It's not that far away. We've already spent the money for next year, fiscal twenty-one. Uh, because we just purchased a truck, the bulk of that's going to be paid out of fiscal twenty-one budget. And we just bought a fire truck, that, well, for that's going to be paid out of the fiscal twenty-one budget. So, uh, to go for a third truck next year, uh, the, the only way we'd be able to do that is to, is to go get a, a loan for close to a quarter million dollars when all's said and done. Whereas we would be able to pay, pay for it in cash, waiting till fiscal twenty-two, I think it is.
Yeah, let me talk to Delory's and I'll have, we'll have more information next, uh, in our next meeting, okay? So we can decide then.
Sounds good.
Dave, what did that, well, what did Volvo have to go to Burlington for?
Uh, uh, you know, it's on my desk, Ken. It was a list of things that, I believe it was some kind of electrical problem, but I, I, I can't be sure of it.
It wasn't anything that was prepared to the fact?
Again, not, not really, uh, my field. I, I leave it to, uh, Mike and the operators to evaluate it. And I know they did talk with Volvo and there was a question of code reading. As you know, a lot of these things all have to be read and everybody has the proprietary computer systems to read their codes. So, uh, it was great decision, uh, over it, uh, or thinking over it because we got an estimate for him to come down and read the codes. And it would have cost a fortune. And then they probably would have had to go back and come back.
I, I know what you're talking about because I've, I've heard those guys. And, and, you know, they're right out of the world, two, three hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah.
They're bored.
We take local whenever we can.
Yeah.
I believe was, was, uh, able to. But I can get you more information tomorrow, Ken. I actually just got the chairs and it's sitting on my desk.
So wasn't anybody down here local? You could have got a trailer?
We did. Weaver, Weaver trucked it up and back.
Oh, Weaver trucked it up?
Yeah.
I thought he drove it out.
Oh, no, no, no. Oh, he'd be still be driving it up if he tried to drive that.
I know. I know.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, I'm all that.
All right.
Anything else on roads?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, um, I see item twelve is town operations update. Dave, have we sufficiently covered that under the emergency managers' report?
Yeah, I think we've covered every aspect of that of everything changing, right? I think we're good with that.
Okay, item thirteen is the, uh, contingency operations. Uh, Dave suggested that we make it official, allowing the chair and vice chair to, uh, sign routine, fairly routine items such as payroll, operating expenses and beamers, uh, for the board. Uh, specifically, the motion I'm looking for is shall the Chasbury Select Board appoint Tim Skagans and Art Whitman to individually approve and sign orders for payroll, operating expenses and beamers payments for a period of one year from the annual organizational meeting on March sixteenth, twenty twenty. Somebody willing to make that motion?
Whoa.
Moved by Ken?
Second.
Second by Tony. I think, uh, I think this makes, uh, good sense, uh, even, uh, after our agreement that, uh, for non-routine items, we can, uh, arrange one at a time to go into call hall and give things, uh, the three signatures that they need. But for the routine items, the less that, uh, that we interact, the better still.
Uh, Tim, clarification, does, does that mean the, uh, warrants would have to have two signatures or just one? Either or, or both of us?
Just one.
Just one, okay?
Yes, Tim Skagans and Art Whitman to individually approve, yes.
Okay.
And then that warrant would then be go to the next select board meeting we put before the whole board. It's just so there aren't delays. It's after it's signed by either you or Art or Tim, that same warrant would go before the full board for full disclosure at the next meeting.
Okay. All right.
Oh, okay. I, I think I might even not have fully underappreciated that. I was thinking this was, uh, ones that we had approved, uh, could get by with one signature, which I guess they still could. But you were actually seeing this as a way that, uh, uh, Tim or Art could approve things before, uh, they go to the board in case three of us had COVID, for example.
Yeah, correct. And that's where this really came from. But it is a policy that's established by a lot of towns because payroll, the beamers, one we just did, they're not really in sequence with select board meetings. So we can't really hold them to the next meeting. But it is the COVID thing that brought this to the fore that sometimes we're going to have to, someone's going to have to have authority to sign these payroll things. And, and that's where it comes from. But it still requires it to go back so everybody can see it.
Okay.
After the damage is done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. By the time you catch us, Art and I will be in the Caribbean. Any other discussion? Okay, the question is, shall the Chasbury Select Board appoint Tim Skagans and Art Whitman to individually approve and sign orders for payroll, operating expenses and beamers payment for a period of one year from the annual meeting, annual organizational meeting on March sixteenth, twenty twenty? Tony?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Ken? Joe?
Aye.
Tim, yes. So that motion is agreed to by a vote of five zero zero. Is there any other business?
Hey, well, I'm going to withdraw the, uh, certificate of project completion and the forest fire warden. They don't need to be here this week. And I checked the drop box and noticed I forgot to put them in there. So I'll bring these up on the May first so that you can be able to have a chance to read these. But, uh, the one is appointing Eric Bushy as the time forest fire warden is in that role, acting as that right now with permission of the state. This will be his appointment starting July first. So we can put that off until it's, everyone can't see it. The project completion is just a standard form from the Vermont Bond Bank, but we should probably, everyone should see that. And then we can do the signing procedure we agreed to where all your, I'm a little hesitant to just have your vote on things that are included in your drop box. Same with the, uh, LIMF, the, uh, the other program, uh, once I send that around to everybody, then we can sign that one.
So there's nothing assigned at the, at the office then?
Yeah, yeah, I see there's, I went back to look and I, I didn't put them in. So no, it's not house on fire thing. So we can just wait on that.
Good enough.
Do we, uh, we have something assigned for the, the solar project, don't we? Do we know how many signatures it needs?
I believe that you should have that in the drop box. Uh, you only need your signature. It's only one signature, yeah.
Very good. Anyone else with other business? Uh, the action items that I caught tonight, uh, Art is going to go to Delory's and talk to them about the, uh, status of that tandem to see if it's, uh, something that we can keep alive for a couple more years. And, uh, I will take the information that we have announced tonight relative to, uh, adjusted town operations and put that up on the website. Anything else we promised to do?
Yeah, Dave was, uh, going to talk to the attorney.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, that was actually in the water board.
I'm sorry.
But yeah, it's still, uh, still worth remembering.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Moved by Ken, second by Art. Shall we adjourn? Tony?
Aye.
Art?
Good night.
Ken?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Ken, yes. All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.